The regular meeting of the Otero County Commission Thursday, December 7th, 2023. This is our last regular meeting of the year. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Markwart?
Here.
Commissioner Gavory?
Here.
Commissioner Grayl?
Here.
And we're going to have the invocation today by City Commissioner Carl Milton.
Lord, we recognize you as the ultimate source of all authority and understanding. Please fill this room with the Holy Spirit and instill wisdom, faith, and courage in your public officials so that they can be the servant leaders this county requires. Please bless our law enforcement and first responders. Please bless the people in this county with peace and prosperity, and please extend those blessings to your peoples in Israel right now. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you follow me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures.
Okay, we're going to do a presentation of employee years of service. We've got quite a few. The first one is five years for Daniel Rappelie. Daniel here. Five years, Michael Skaggs. There you go. Been a while.
You're a very precious person.
I am very precious, sir. I do.
Remember me?
I do. I know. We won't talk about what happened back in those days. Franklin Miller, five years. Sammy Breswellis, five years. Dennis Hayes, five years. Stanley Wynn, five years. All these people are hardworking people. They don't have time to tell us. Mark Douglas, five years. I know he's here. You look like you're $25,000 richer, buddy.
You darn right.
Yeah, forgot that, right?
I like you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm out to go shoot.
I know.
At the best shooting range in all Otero County where?
That's right. In 1990.
19 Rockwood.
All of them there.
Thank you.
Christopher Duran, five years. Little cowboy. Okay, here we go. Five years, Hergen Dunnebauer. Did I do it close enough?
That's pretty good.
A little. I don't speak English very good. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Judith.
Adriana Han, five years. Darryl Matherley, five years. David Glass, five years. We are really glad you are here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You made it to four days.
Gloria Davidson, 10 years. You go, girl. This started when you were really young.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Patrick Lucero, 10 years. Thank you very much. 10 years, that's pretty awesome.
Appreciate everything.
Matt Clark, 10 years. I like when you're having fun, buddy. You're just waiting for it to start, right?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
William Garza, 10 years. Raquel Padilla, 10 years. Maria Teas, 10 years. You must have really been young when you started. Like 12. Only 15. It was no child labor law.
Exactly.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Lea Silva, 10 years. Louis V Santiago, 10 years. Daniel Buck, 10 years. Over there, working hard, keeping his life, keeping his running, keeping the people at home from saying, "I can't hear you."
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ernesto Melendez, 15 years. That's a long time. Thanks for sticking with us.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate everything.
Gabriel Vega, 15 years. Samuel Montoya, 15 years. Jane Hollister, 15 years. Paul Years Sifuentes, 20 years. 20 years. Holy cow, we're getting into the good stuff now. Brenda Garcia, 20 years.
She's at work.
Steve Odom, 20 years. Robin Holmes, 30 years. Holy, holy. That's a long time. Priscilla Chavis, 35 years. Wow, these people deserve more. More than this piece of paper. Jean Branch, 45 years. You must have been a baby when you started.
I was two years old.
Thank you. Appreciate it all.
Congratulations.
Now you're asleep.
And then I'll cool off in here a little bit. It's not going to... Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move on to the sheriff's office report.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Lackler, Otero County Sheriff. For November, we responded to 2,555 calls for service, 238 investigative reports, did 66 traffic crash investigations, resulted in 74 arrests. We had two warrants that were served, issued 183 traffic citations, and our community service guys served 355 subpoenas for the courts. November for narcotics, we had eight search warrants, seven arrests, one agency assist. We had 30 case reports generated. We had one checkpoint case, $852 in cash seized, five vehicles seized, one firearm seized, eight fugitives apprehended. They did one overdose case investigation. And I'll tell you on that overdose case investigation, there's a good chance that will be prosecuted as a homicide with the feds in Las Cruces. Did that four jail possession cases, seized 11,966 grams of meth, 1.4 grams of marijuana, 3.3 grams of cocaine, 1,922 fentanyl pills were seized. We had a total of $1.2 million worth of illegal narcotics seized.
Wow.
That was one of our biggest months since I've been here. Special events we attended, we had a job fair, a recruiting event at Holloman Air Force Base. We had our last dare graduation with Sunrise Elementary and Yucca Heights Elementary in Chaparral. November 28th, we conducted two, one daytime, one evening, presentation to the El Paso Community College. These students will be graduating on December 14th with a certification for law enforcement, which makes it easier for us. We could put them through a cert by waiver and we don't have to go through the full 16-week academy. Basically, they're getting the academy down there and getting a certification. With that, we have received one application. That person is currently in the background phase, and we've talked with several others. We hope to have some more applications right after 14th when they get their certification. In our training section, most everything we're doing right now is trying to get the guys done with their required bionium training. And we completed just about all of our firearms qualifications. We got one more makeup for some guys that were out on leave the last time we shot. So we'll get that taken care of here pretty quick. In our manning section, Deputy Graves completed the law enforcement academy. He's back and we put him to work now. So he has started the FTO program, and we'll get him finished up with that in about 12 weeks. Deputies Roberto Angianno, Christian Hinojos, Valerie Lundquist, Dynasty Guzman, and Cesar Jimenez, they have all started the pre-academy training. Basically, what we're going to do is we're going to give them the entire academy and then we're going to send them to the academy. This gives them kind of a jumpstart so they know what they're fixing to encounter in Santa Fe. They'll go February 4th. This week they'll start up there. I do have six lateral transfers. This is kind of unreal. I have never seen six lateral transfers applied at the same time. But we've got them. We got them in the background phase right now. My goal is to have all six of these hired by the end of the year. Three of them should be done within the next two weeks and the others by the end of the year. With these six laterals and the five going to the academy, everything works out, we'll be fully staffed by the end of the year. Be 59.
That's awesome.
59 total deputies.
Yes. Yay, no kidding, yay.
And lastly, on our vehicles, we got we got three that I should be receiving this weekend or first part of next week. They're all outfitted and stuff, so we'll get them in rotation. We've got four more that are over there to be done. And then we'll wait and see as soon as we get the capital outlay set up. We got five in Las Luminous that hopefully we'll go pick up and start getting them outfitted and get them in rotation. So right now, things were sitting pretty good.
That's awesome.
I was following one of the new units, and on the back of it, it says, "In God We Trust."
Yes, it does.
That is awesome.
That's awesome.
Thank you, yes.
Yep.
David, I've got a couple of questions for you. Have you and RB had a chance to go over the BLM contract deal with helping the BLM officer? Where's that at or if you want to do it or not?
My feelings on it right now is I've got other priorities than helping BLM. It's not that I don't want to help them. It's just right now, we've got overtime for traffic control, DWI and stuff like that. To me, that's kind of more of a priority right now. These guys, you know, hitting the streets and, you know, 82 is a racetrack right now. We've got to slow people down up there and stuff. So we're kind of focusing all our overtime and stuff, working the highways between here and El Paso here and Las Cruces, and then 82, just trying to slow that down up there. So right now, I would have to say I don't think I need to get into that right now. I think we need to, I need to take care of right here right now, so.
We probably need to notify them and tell them that because he asked me the other day at one of the meetings I was at what the status was on it. Last week when we were in Chaparral, we were visiting with Willie, he was wanting some of the paperwork or whatever information we have on the building to try to help us push that through. And he said he didn't know if it mattered who had it. Do you have the, it was on the capital outlay funding for the Chaparral station? Did you submit that, Matt? Do we have some paperwork we can send him?
So I don't have paperwork on us.
If I might, what he is requesting are plans and designs. We don't go to plan and design until we're funded because that funding pays for that. What we have is just a cost estimate from the engineers. That's all we have.
And that's what's submitted to the, to capital outlay?
No, they do not request supporting documentation. They have a specific form we fill out. There is no attachments. It is just what the project is, the scope of work, how much we're requesting, if there's been public input. We do not get to submit anything.
We also need to look on that to see if it can be relocated. You know, he thought it was, it said in the writing somewhere where the site could be relocated to a different site.
That's not in our ICIP or the capital outlay scope of work.
Okay. If we can look at that and just make sure. For some reason, he came up with that. And then the other deal, after that same meeting, I got an email from, and I won't get her name right, Sylvia Ula. She's representative, one of the representatives for Martin Henry. On trying, and I sent it to you and RB and Pamela. I haven't got any response on it, so I'm trying to figure out, I'm not saying this rudely, but she's wanting to help us fund this thing, not in the building part, but equipment. I'm thinking furniture, radios. So I need to respond to her somehow. She was willing to come over and visit with us, sit down, and whatever we need to do. So I just kind of...
I'll have a, I'll have your response by the end of the day.
There you go. So and then...
I think it's something that, I mean, if she's offering up to help us, let's talk with her, let's listen to her. I mean, that's the only way we're going to get some of that extra money is to visit with them, so. I can do that.
I agree. That's all I have.
I wanted to ask you about your deputy that's having some health issues because I personally would like to donate to his family for the holidays to make sure his kids get Christmas and all that. So would we bring that to the sheriff's office if somebody wanted to donate to that fund?
Yeah, we've got an envelope and stuff at the office. As a matter of fact, I'll probably be going over this afternoon to check on again. And we've got a little bit of money that we'll take over there today just to make sure we can keep her, you know, eating meals, you know, and staying in the hotel and stuff. We'll just try to help them, you know, stay comfortable over there. You know, the kiddos are here with grandma and stuff, so. But it's kind of a slow process, you know? They had to kind of sedate and stuff like that. And they're trying to bring him out very slowly. So it's been a long process, but the LEO Border Patrol, I mean, lots of people have kicked in money and stuff also. So right now, we're doing pretty good, but we're going to keep going. As soon as we let up, something's going to happen to where...
Well, I know it's expensive for her to stay over there and everything. He's been there for now for a little while, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
So is cash better? If I wanted to give you cash, is that probably easier for her? She doesn't have to mess with the check? Okay, I'll get you some cash because I want to help with that.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much.
One other thing, David, I forgot to ask. Commissioner Markwart and I attended a city meeting Monday morning and it's on the curfew, trespassing, truancy. They were, I asked the chief of police if he had contacted you and discussed some of this stuff with you because it's really confusing to me because some of the stuff they're trying to do, I mean, Tularosa, Cloudcroft, they have, has he visited with you at all on some of this?
We've talked on that several times.
Okay, so you're on board with him and...
Yeah, and I'll tell you the same thing I told him. We basically, we work, we enforce United States statute and stuff. We do not enforce city ordinances.
And that's what he, that's what he told me. My big deal is what is, some of the stuff they're trying to do is during the hours of eight to four, there can't be any kids under 18 on any of the city parks, city property. Well, Tularosa goes to school four days a week, so, you know, it's kind of hard. I don't know how they're going to do that.
It's going to be very difficult. I just look at it too. I mean, if it's challenged, then it's going to be a court decision on whether that can be enforced or not. So I think what they're trying to do is a good thing, but I think in the legal aspect, we'll just have to see if it can actually be, you know, an enforceable ordinance, so.
I know they're trying to get the parking restricted over there to just, for residential parking and start to put up some signs and ticket people or tow their cars or whatever so the kids don't park in that neighborhood and congregate at that park where that seems to be the problem.
Right.
That might help a little bit.
We talked about that. That's probably, that's not going to be a problem. If they get it posted properly, they can enforce that. That's not an issue there.
Did that ordinance pass Tuesday night on the curfew deal?
Yes, but curfew. It's just updating an existing ordinance.
Yeah, because they were talking about postponing the truancy deal a little bit for get some more information or something.
That would be for the parks.
Do you have any other ideas other than taking away rights from the innocent versus, you know, punishing everybody? Is there any other ideas, like addressing the actual problem?
The chief coonier, and I talked, we talked last night. He's at a conference in Albuquerque. Our discussion last night was like, when he gets back, we're going to sit down and see if there's something else, you know, another route and something else we can do. It's going to be, it's going to be difficult, but we agreed to sit down and talk about it. So hopefully, we can, we can come up with an idea to help him out, so.
And then I have a question on accident reports. Do your reports say the cause of the accident whenever you're reporting that? Do we have...
Most of the time, in the narrative, the deputy will put vehicle number one failed to stop at a stop sign and impacted vehicle number two. That's kind of about as far as we're going to go. And again, a lot of it is subjective, an opinion. But if they have the evidence to support it, that will go in the narrative.
Is there a way to pull that up? You know, how many ran a stop sign or how many hit an elk? Anything like that or in that kind of reporting? Because what my thoughts are, is there's so many elk hits and that just proves our overpopulation of elk.
There's so many elk on the mountain right now. I bet I saw 40 of them on my way to work this morning. They're everywhere right now.
We're endangering our humans because of the overpopulation of elk, and that's kind of the direction I wanted to go with that. That's why I'm asking.
I gathered that data last year from somewhere. I don't know if it was state-produced or what, but it was up to like 2018, 2019.
Yeah, you mentioned the DOT collects statistics on that and they put it out on the annual.
But that's only going to be on state roads or does it include...
That's, that's the collecting data that they get from our accident reports.
Okay. Yeah, all our accident reports go to them. So they would have every one of them that we do, so. I didn't know whether we go to DOT or, he's the IT guy. He's the smart one back there. That's why, that's why I look at him sometimes on this. I'm like, can we do that? There's a lot of times I ask for some crazy reports, but you know what? He gets me crazy reports, so.
It's actually all who gets it off the UNM and whoever they have in like their interns for statistics and stuff like that, they put all the data together. Because we don't have a way in our database to actually search through the accident reports based on this vehicle hit an elk or this was the cause of the accident. So that's why we let them do the hard work.
We need some interns. We need some interns. Future dispatchers.
That it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And I'll get you some money.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, TB RDA report.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Barney, 911 Director. For the month of November, we processed about 12,000 calls at the 911 center. About 2,000 911s came in, about 1,000 admit, or I shouldn't... About two thousand nine ones ones came in, about a thousand admin, or question, about a thousand law enforcement officer lines and about five, fifty-five hundred admin lines into the 911 center. So, we had a little bit busy month. We did process a lot more outbound calls this month as we did a lot of validations for NCIC records, records that have been holding for, I mean, we are calling people from two thousands asking if their vehicles were still stolen and guns were still stolen. So, that's part of our process that we've been doing now. We receive about a thousand validations a month that we have to do to validate with the state and FBI. We also had some tours happen in the center. We had Aura Vista volunteers come in and Donegan volunteers come into the 911 center to tour and see our operations, how we handle our call volume. We also took a tour out to Eddy County 911 out in Artesia and learned a little bit about the NCIC process that they handle and how they do their validations and how they kind of store their warrants, so we can kind of update our process too. We had one dispatcher graduate from CIT with the city held their program. We just got back last week from Omaha, Nebraska, Native Air, AirCom. We were able to visit our, the dispatchers that dispatched this area. They dispatch eleven aircrafts for the state of New Mexico and parts of Texas. So, we were able to see their operation, how we handle calls, when we call them, how that process works. They, they don't do it like us. They, they, it's a, it's a lot of process. They make about six phone calls before they actually launch a heli, a helicopter for us. So, it does take a little bit when we do call them. And then we still have one position open. We're about to see three positions open due with some promotional process that's going on here. And again, we're still continuing to working on our NCIC process to up our compliance with the state along with FBI. So, there's a lot of changes happening that some law enforcement officers are not liking, but we, we just gotta get back into compliance with what the state and federal wants. So, that's where we're at.
You want to tell us a little bit of something about the two new people I met yesterday? They seem pretty impressive.
Yes, so we did hire our assistant director Hilton Chapman and Amelia Bur as our operations managers. They're, they're in the back there. Hilton is, has lived here for a while. He's been working on base as a contractor and Amelia came with prior experience from North Carolina as a dispatcher. So, now they are here to help with the aspect of the communication center and really try to get us back up into good structure and just like all the other agencies that have their structure online. So, hopefully, a lot, a lot of stuff will start changing again.
So, when you hear the southern drawl, you'll know it's Amelia. So, North Carolina, love it.
She's got a thick country accent, so.
Love it.
But that's, that's that. And I know, just want to see if you have any questions about the SMART 911, the county alerting system that I did send you guys.
And I, I did that and it's super cool and super easy.
Okay.
I went online and signed myself up for that, so.
Yeah, and there, we, I figured out another feature that we can add now. We can get more information. You can put your house information in there, what kind of vehicles you drive, all that information. That kind of shares data with the first responders.
Do you want to explain kind of what that is, just so that everyone knows?
Yeah, so we used to have Command Central Notify, which is our notification system for the county for emergency alerts. We migrated into a program called Rave. Motorola bought Rave out and Command Central Notify, they merged it all into one. So, now, and SMART, SMART 911 was that product. And SMART 911 now integrates with a couple of the programs that we offer that allows us to do those mass notifications. It also works with iPaws, so we're in the process with FEMA trying to get our license for iPaws so we can completely get in compliance with that. But pretty much it allows us to send mass notifications out along with seeing the data that you guys may have. If we respond to an address or your house, we may have some information about that. You know, who lives there, if there's a child that has maybe disabilities, if there's an adult that has disabilities, key information, what type of vehicles that might be at that residence. So, we have that data for residents so we know exactly what we're kind of walking into and how to handle the situation. Or if you're not there, we can have a proper phone number to call. So, it kind of helps us with the new technology that we have and, and better response.
Okay.
No, good.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Matt Clark, Emergency Services Director.
Good morning.
Codes handled seventeen solid waste complaints, three weeds and five open burns. Our office responded to six fire calls, six EMS calls throughout the, the month of November. We did eight commercial structures on inspections and one cannabis facility.
The weed was on fire?
Sometimes. Makes it interesting. It, it, it has unfortunately happened before, so. They opened up thirty-seven new cases, completed fifty-one follow-ups and closed twenty-four. The slash pit is closed right now. Back Forest Service has lit that on fire to burn the slash off and get ready for next year. So, you'll still see some smoke up in the area. They're constantly monitoring it and it was a, a really good burn this year, I think. The volunteers responded to a hundred and ninety-nine calls for service with a hundred and sixty-six of those being EMS, five of those being fires. So, with that, if you have any questions?
Jacob. Matt, I did receive the email on the Canyon, Canyon Place.
Uh huh.
Got too many canyons up there.
We, we do.
So, I'm going to get with the individual that was interested in it. I did talk to Rachel last night on it again, and I'll relay that message.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Jacob, how you doing this morning?
Good, how are you?
Doing good. The Florida little site down there.
Yeah, not much, not terribly much has happened. The tree's removed off the house, I seen that.
They are cleaning up some.
Yeah, I seen them out there cutting some weeds and stuff. They're, they're starting to do things. It's kind of a slow process. The, the trash and stuff is still there, but we finally made contact with them, been talking to them. So, hopefully, we'll start to see more progress happening over the next couple of weeks, so.
Okay. In Bowls Acres on, what was it, eighty-sixth Street? The one with the two mobile homes that were, what, did you ever contact the owner on that?
So, we're sending out notifications. It's a LLC out of Texas that is showing that it owns it. So, we're sending out the letters trying to get in contact. We haven't heard anything back from anybody yet.
And one other one in Bowls Acres, the one on Seventh, Second Street with all the trash that just keeps accumulating there. It's not getting, it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
The, with a big double, double white trailer.
The big green one that's catty corner?
Yeah, we haven't been able to make contact with anybody since the last time they, they came out and said, "No, we don't live here, we just work on cars here." That was the last time anybody's actually came out and talked to us. And we haven't had any response in, from anybody since then.
So, how do we, well, that person, the owner of it died, my understanding is correct. How do you go about blocking that area off so people don't come over there? Could that be one of those situations, RB, that we have funding for? We clean that mess up? I mean, they're just bringing stuff over and dumping over there, construction debris. I mean, there's, when I last went down there, there was either four or five vehicles parked out front in the easement. So, I mean, they just keep getting more and more.
And they're, they're dumping trash there?
There's all kinds of construction debris. They tore down an old building and then the insulation was everywhere and then all of a sudden, there's just more stuff all, all over the place. About to run out of land.
One option is to place a camera in our easement to see who is doing the dumping, to be able to cite them. We would need to see where the status of the land is since the owner died. Is, is it, is it being passed to someone else? Has anyone paid the property taxes? I'd need, we'd need to look at all of that information to decide which course of, of action to take. Potentially, we, our, our stat, our ordinance for, for doing the processes mentioned is, is specific to dilapidated buildings, so it doesn't sound like this would apply here.
If you drove by and looked at it, you would almost think it's dilapidated plywood over there. I have been by there and the front door's open.
Yeah.
There's, there's people.
Yeah, there's somebody that lives there.
Yeah.
For sure.
So, that sounds like squatters probably.
Yes.
So, we need to work with the sheriff's department and see what options they have to deal with the squatters. I'll get with Jacob on it and, and then, and talk to the sheriff too and see.
Yeah, this one's just getting worse. Not better. That's all I have. Thank you, Jacob.
The house by the La Luz Water Department? I know that they've moved that trailer full of trash, but do we have any progress for the rest of the cleanup?
I do not. I'll get with, with the case officer Freddie. He's, he's been in contact with the property owner. He's an elderly gentleman trying to, to get the, the guy that's living there to, to do the stuff. I'm not a hundred percent sure on, on what's, what's happening there, so I'll get with him.
And then quail trails with our squatters at that mobile home?
So, we haven't got any progress done on that. We're still working to try to see if we can get the, the tenants there. We still aren't in a process where we can cite. I'm getting with some neighboring coenforcement departments in different counties to see what their process is. We, we can't do citations, so I'm trying to see what process they use to, to take people to court so we can get something moving. Hopefully, we'll have something on that soon. I know we've talked about criminal complaints, filing them into court, so I'm gonna get with the, with the magistrate in court and see what process they want us to do to be able to file in court so we can move forward with this stuff.
Mr. Cervantes has literally called me every two weeks since February. I mean, we're going on almost a year on this and squatters do not have rights. I mean, we've got to figure it out to get this cleaned up and done.
Unfortunately, I don't have the authority to deal with squatters. I barely have the authority to get them into court, so I don't, I don't have the answers to that. That's, that's beyond my scope of, of what I'm allowed to do.
And then Eileen Acres? I know that, that property sold and they were personally cleaning it up. How is the progress with that?
So, I went by yesterday. There's a couple trash bags left there and a frame to the trailer, that's it. I got in contact with her, they're waiting to, to cut that frame up. They're gonna take it for recycle. It should be done within the next week or two is what they're telling me, so. It looks really good over there.
Good. And then Critter Lane?
So, Critter Lane, it's slow moving, but he is making some progress. He's working on starting to take down some of those dilapidated mobile homes that are out there. It's very limited on what he can get done, but he's slowly trying to, to move forward and make something happen, so. We're just gonna keep in contact with him as long as it keeps moving forward. We're gonna try to keep working with him to, to we can get compliance. I think it's gonna be a long time, but as long as it keeps moving forward, we're gonna try to keep working on it.
And then the illegal dumping on that vacant property out in, off of McDonald? I know we talked about it a couple of months ago. We were trying to locate the owner of the property.
McDonald, that's not ringing the bell to me.
Yep, there's some dilapidated mobile homes getting there. Then there's just a vacant property on the south side on the corner that's been dumped on.
I'll have to look into that. That's not, that's not ringing the bell with me, but I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
That's all I have.
The new building is very nice. I enjoyed that meeting we had out there the other day with the Forest Service. That was nice to get a tour of the building. Turned out really good.
It, it did, and we held our quarterly medical retract meeting there last night. More different, more agencies got to see it again and a lot of good comments out of it.
Yeah, yeah, very nice.
Not a bad seat in the house in that one.
Not a bad seat in the house. That's right, screens all around. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of looking like Santa Claus there.
Hey.
Talking about the beard.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tom Porter of County Road Department. So, for last month, we did a lot more hauling out on the southern end of the mesa. Excuse me. FO seventeen, FO eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-four and sixty-four. We hauled out of that borrowed pit that we were building down there by the Wade's Ranch. Hauled onto Bell Canyon, La Luz Canyon, Calico Peak, Bear, Prestridge, Deep, Rattlesnake, Angel, Dusty Moon and Verden Ranch Road. We did a lot of potpil patching up in the foothills and mountains to try and get ready for this year's snowfall before they get destroyed even worse. Did sign maintenance. We got the striping done on this year's chip seal projects and two minor snowstorms.
And I did drive High Sierra this morning when I came to work and it's pretty nice.
Thank you.
Just saying.
Thank you.
Tom, when I came back from Chaparral last week, I noticed that there was, it looked like they were doing maneuvers again out on the range. How's the five oh six?
So, I drove it about two weeks ago. They were keeping the lateral traffic down to a minimum. They were running up and down it, but have not caused any blowouts as of yet. It is washboarding, but we're gonna have that as dry as it is right now anyways.
Put no tanks or anything on the road?
No tanks that I saw. There was a few, you know, wheeled vehicles traveling it, but nothing high speed.
And then you haven't had any information, this is probably you and RB both on the, from the Army on settlement?
No, I, I sent an email and I didn't get a response, so I'll send another one to try and find out what their timeline is on that project and...
And when did they say they were gonna start those crossovers?
That's what, that's what I was referring to.
Well, I was also talking about the reimbursement for...
That was submitted, a, a couple of months ago. We got the additional evidence together that they wanted and, and they said they would review it and, and submit it up their chain and, and let us know.
Anything else?
Nope, we don't know if the signs got moved on the Alamo detour yet.
Spoke with the engineers right after your email and they were supposed to instruct the contractor movement. And I haven't been out in that area to look yet.
Yeah, I, I drive around, so I haven't been up there yet either. And I think that's it. Thank you for fixing everything that you have fixed.
Thank you.
I got a picture sent to me from Weed. I guess you got the cattle guard in?
Yes, sir. They finished it up yesterday morning.
We haven't heard from Spike, have we?
I haven't.
We will.
Although they were aware that was happening because Lonnie got permission to stockpile the materials on that field adjacent, which is from Spike, so.
Commissioner Brilla, Tom and I did go out on Monday and meet with the residents of Ben and spent a few hours out there looking at concerns and issues they had and, and provided them explanations for each of them and, and some of the answers were, that we provided was Tom has a plan to deal with this or that and others is it's a personal property, private property issue. But we have a few things that we're working on and will continue to work on. And, and then we have, they're aware that Colonial's funding can be applied for in early next year, so any of the issues where that funding could assist with, we'll need to submit something for it. And I think the deadline for that sometime in March.
Good, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Trent Parker, Project Manager.
Good morning.
Good morning, Trent.
We had a pretty busy month. The Chins project, we issued a notice to proceed for December fourth and abatement started on December fourth. And so, the next thing scheduled up would be the demo of the kitchen, existing kitchen walls and stuff like that. And then we've got to take the floors out to accommodate the new, new plumbing. But it's, it's off to a good start and so far, we're running right on schedule.
Trent, on that project, I couldn't remember, is the roofing? Do we have a re-roof in that or a patch?
All we had for allowance in there is fifty thousand on this one because the way the pricing came back with the roof being its own bid lot, the roof actually costs more than what funded... the roof actually cost more than what funding we had. So we had to opt to do the kitchen and multipurpose room, but we have submitted for new funding for, to do the final phase of the project. Roofing materials just skyrocketed from what was originally estimated. We didn't anticipate the amount that that...
That's a big roof.
Yeah. Well, it went from being estimated at about a half a million dollars to be estimated at $1.2 million just in price increases.
Did you go see in that, the kitchen area is over here, and then it kind of makes an L-turn? And you go in the back doors, it was leaking right in there. The maintenance guy was telling me about it. Have you went in to see what he's talking about or...
Yes, and we've been aware of that, and Buildings and Grounds has looked into it. It's, that's why we put that allowance in there. We're going to fix that area. That's the main area that's concerning. We're looking to get that completed. Because in Phase 2 of the project, there was a lot of equipment removed off the roof, but the curvings were scheduled to be left in place until the roof was reconstructed. So with this allowance, we're going to go in there and try to rip out all of that area and at least get it patched until we can do the full tear-off and replacement. So then PSAP dispatch center, this month, the drywall, painting, and ceilings was completed. Doors and hardware were installed. We have the access control scheduled for the week, the 18th, to go in. Above ground, or above ceiling work, trimming out all the electrical, HVAC, all that stuff's in progress. And we're still targeted to be complete by the first of the year, which still leaves us about...
Is that back there where the records are? Is that where you're talking about?
No, the administration area.
Okay.
Where the conference and offices and everything is at. So we're looking to be complete with that by the end of the year, which we're going to be about three months ahead of schedule, which is good for the center and all the work that they have going in. They need this space. We're already looking at expansion.
Yeah, it's a big project.
Next is Alamo Street Phase 2. The subgrade and engineer filled grading is ongoing. As per the contractor, they're maintaining schedule on that, so we're looking to be back open around April timeframe. It'll be good to have that complete. Rialto Pickus Bridge, the concrete box structure is being formed and scheduled to have the concrete placed to the floor of the structure, and then they'll be able to start forming the rest of the structure. There hasn't been any unforeseen's on that one, so that's a good thing. There was a fiber line in the way, but it had been abandoned, so that was good news that we didn't have to have any relocations. Susie Anne Bridge, we had the pre-construction meeting, and the notice to proceed's been issued, so that's scheduled for December 11th for that area to shut down. We did issue a PSA on that to all channels within our resource to try to notify people of that closure. The new road shop building, we're putting the partition wall in now, and then we'll go into looking to get the new electrical service and electrical in there so that building can start being utilized. The shooting range expansion, they're about 90% complete on the 400-yard range, and they're about 90% complete on the general, for general purpose bays.
So a lot of dirt.
They've moved a ton of dirt. And they're about 50% complete on an excavation of the retention area, and then they'll be on to the 100-yard range. And then once we get complete with all areas, we're going to go in and do some graveling of the parking areas and roadways. The Weed transfer station, as you guys stated earlier, Tom's crew's got the gargrail put in. I'm going to be scheduling to get the power service relocated out of where it's currently in the way of dumpsters being dropped. And then I'm also working on the scope of work to put out for bid the fence with a six-foot option that was requested by the board. And so I look to have that done and be on the January commission agenda.
And then on continuing with Weed, RB was telling me that you'd gone up, that he'd gone up and looked at the community center, and I guess Wilson and Company's working on that to...
Yes, we had an engineer from Wilson Company meet with us, so they can provide cost estimates and assessments on options for what can be done with the building and including the cost of what it would be to completely demo it. So we can see, you know, have a full picture of options on what we can do with it.
And along with that, Eric with Facilities is scheduling a test to be done for asbestos. So we're going to go in and see what kind of level of asbestos is possibly in the building. It was built in '75, so we got, that'll be a main, major factor, you know, depending on how much is going on.
I have a lot of good memories in that place. Had some good dances up there when I was a kid.
We talked about that at our meeting. I went to school there up till 4th grade when it closed down, so. So then the next project is the Fairgrounds, video surveillance and PA system. We do have a contract signed on that, and it's scheduled to begin the first of the year. They should have all their equipment by then. We're looking at about a 60-day install, and that'll be complete. So it'll be nice to have that surveillance system in there.
It would be nice.
The prison re-roof, we've got that started, and it's in progress. We have our first progress meeting scheduled for next week, and we should have a progress report today from the contractor of what they've done so far. Haven't been able to have a chance to get back down there, but next week, I'll be down there to visually see the progress of that. And that's about it.
What day are you going down there?
Not sure yet. The contractor, their main manager for it, is having surgery tomorrow, and it'll determine when he'll be able to get up on the roof, probably towards the end of the week, I assume.
Let me know. I'll run down with you.
Those are some big roofs. That's roughly 70,000 square foot of roof.
Like a shopping center.
I don't know if this is a you question or an RB question, but the playground at the Weed Community Center?
Last time I talked to Pablo about it, he had not heard back on whether we received the grant or not.
And he is looking at other grants to see if there's another option if that one doesn't come through.
The, at Weed again, there was a big discussion last time on camera. Did we get, we find something to put up there?
That is something that Aid has been looking into, to try to find a camera system for that.
Yes, we were going to work with the fire chief to see where he wants the cameras. Then while we did talk to Rob, he got us the measurements, and we're going to get with the camera company to get the measurements to get the cameras. And he has like a megapixel for each camera. Kind of like similar to what we did at the road shop for the security camera system. We just need to give, what the party to have access to the buildings, and then also to verify for internet access, see what type of internet they have. So to have everything on the cloud so that we can be the cameras near. Yeah, but we did talk to Rob about that.
It's like $200 cameras, not $8,000 cameras. 200.
Thank you, Trent.
Commissioner Marquand, do you mind letting the Forest Service to jump in and provide their briefing so they can get on to their next thing they got to do?
Yes, absolutely. I'm going to come on up.
Sure.
Long time knows thee. Like, what, 12 hours?
Sorry. Have you been drinking?
Yeah, coffee. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I don't have a huge briefing for you, but what I do want to share with you is that, you know, this Terry is leaving now. Terry Delay will be leaving us. He is not our, will not be our permanent forest supervisor. We have a permanent forest supervisor that will be coming in at the end of January, beginning of February. His name is Jason Freeman. And so during the period of time where there's this gap between the official forest supervisor, I will be the official acting forest supervisor. So if you have any questions or anything during that period of time, from December 15th, 16th, until the end of January when Jason arrives, then we'll certainly bring him in and make sure that you meet him. So that's the big news. I think you've already met Ron Mays, our district ranger. And I'm hoping that you may have already been, that all of you are receiving messages from her. I know she sends out a lot of messages on our X burns so that you guys are aware of what's going on, and we're trying to be as open and transparent of what's going on. One of the things that I think Amy asked, or might have been you that asked it, not at the last meeting, but the one before that, was you tell us about what you're planning to do, but you never tell us what you're going to do. And I wanted to tell you that Amanda is actually preparing a really nice year, end-of-year review, and it's a beautiful document that she's putting together, and she'll make sure that you get that. So if anybody doesn't have, or isn't already receiving from Amanda Frye and would like to receive stuff from Amanda on her Rolodex stuff that she sends out, please, please let us know, and we'll make sure that you're on that so that you can get that. Hey, this is what we actually did this year. I'm not sure that there's really anything else. The forest plan revision, we did do our initial briefing with the deputy regional forester, but we have not yet done with the regional forester. We're still waiting on the biological assessment to be completed and turned into Fish and Wildlife Service for consultation. SSRP is still in consultation, so that's where we are with that. And so this is pretty much where we are. Nothing really spectacular to tell. If you have any questions, please let me know.
The last time you was here, my first question to you is what are you going to do about the elk and the Department of Game and Fish?
So we've been working to try to get some of that done with different types of meetings. And remember that we are asking other folks to help us in some cases because we don't really have full gamut of being able to do anything with game and fish to make, to force their hand. So we're asking others to, like, assist us.
And then you had told us that you got a good chunk of money coming in. Is that what this assessment that you're doing right now for the thinning, some logging, clearing around Cloudcroft?
Is that the HF? Yeah, that's a good chunk of money that came for the Keystone Agreement. Is that what it is? It's the Keystone Agreement, yes. And it's for the thinning 16 springs and the Cloudcroft wildfire, I'm not bad about this, Wui.
Wildland urban.
Wildland urban interface. And yes, we did get a chunk of money for that, and we're working with the forestry, state forestry on that project.
Do you have any idea when that might start?
Ron, why don't you come on up here so you can speak to that better than I can?
So much of what's going on right now is in the 16 Springs area. We've got several burns going and several thinning projects going in the 16 Springs area. As far as the Cloudcroft Wui, we're hoping to expedite the NEPA process to get that going, hopefully within six to 12 months. You know, we have that authority under the wildfire crisis strategy now, and so that's the approach we're trying to take with that project. We also will include other areas, other urban areas, if you will, for example Sacramento and possibly Timburon to clear areas around those communities to protect them from fire. So we're hoping to be implementing and using that fund, those funds, within the next 12, 12 months to 24 months, so that's the plan.
At least it's moving forward. That's the main thing, if we survive that time.
Yeah, we're seeing a lot of movement forward, but it's, but yeah, as we know with the governmental processes, sometimes it's a little bit slow. That's the, that's the whole plan with bureaucracies, is that we don't move too fast and then, you know, not make the right decisions along the way for the public, right? So, any other questions?
So the cleanup, you're reporting it onto all of the websites necessary for the insurance companies to look into so that we can start insuring our residents up there again? When we do the right reporting, is that...
I believe so.
Okay. And then, I just lost my other question. It is... Dana, I lost it. That's why I write it down. I lost it.
Yay. Less questions. Amy asks hard questions.
Yeah, well, don't hesitate.
Oh, I got now. So the grant funding that's been going out, there's some of our smaller sawmills that have been applying for these grants and all that kind of stuff, and they're being awarded equipment, kind of the cart before the horse. We're not allowed to do any logging, but they're getting the equipment to do that. Does that mean we're going to be able to do some of the logging? Is that what the...
That's the plan, Commissioner Brilla. And I do plan on meeting with Kim Kostelnik and other area sawmill operators to give them an idea as to what we have lined up in terms of timber sales that are up and coming so that we can better prepare them, both with funding to get the equipment as well as to staff up to get some of those, that material processed. So we're hoping to make some significant progress here in the near future, so.
There were a couple loggers at that last meeting. We were out at ELC. They came, so they're standing bald.
See, I knew I brought the right guy.
That's right.
Another thing that we've discussed and I want to look into, it needs to be done as quickly as possible because of the timing, is they have some permits available that are for low-income to receive free firewood. And so I'd really like to take advantage of that. It's one, it'd be accomplishing fuel reduction that we want up there, and two, it'd be getting some needed resources to people that need them. But the, one, the first challenge is we need someone to cut the wood. And so maybe local businesses that maybe want to volunteer that have that equipment is an option. So I thought about looping in the Center of Commerce. And then I think, you know, the county and city might be able to partner with each other to distribute it. I think we could get around the anti-donation clause because it's for indigent. But then we got to come up with a process for the distribution and the allotment of it, how all that'll work. So I don't know if anyone wants to work with me on that. We can try and work together to come up with something.
So let me be a little bit more clear on the, so it's not really permits for free fuel wood. We are allotted so much that we're allowed to give as free fuel wood. And generally, we will, those have to come out of a different, like, how our timber operation happens or our permit actions happen. But I want to continue talking to you all about that because I think it's a great idea. Something Erica brought up before, and we'd like to see how much we can actually use some of our... It just helps us, and we talked, we briefly mentioned it yesterday when we were talking, is that this will help us. It helps, you know, some of your folks, you know, some of the community folks. So if we can make that happen, so. Not really sure. I know we were just talking about how much free fuel wood we're allowed to have, and then, you know, who can actually cut it and in what areas because, again, you know, there are some areas we just can't cut, right? So.
We need to keep working on that because we're going to have a lot of people that need fuel this winter, I'm afraid, with the cost of fuel, what it is. All right, anything else?
Good.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nina Sisler, Correctional Services Director. Today's, the average population for November was 190. Total population for today is 160. We have 121 males in-house, 13 females. I do have nine still at Otero Prison, three at Hudspith, one in Lincoln County, six on treatment furloughs, three for out-of-county courts, and three juveniles. As far as video court in facility, we've had 43 municipal courts in facility in November. Magistrate, we had 101. District court, 152. Out-of-county video courts, because we do the video courts for out-of-county as well, 13. In-person courts, we had six. Magistrate for prelims, and we had 20 district. I have 16 vacancies. I do have three in background and hiring process. So keep your fingers crossed over there, and hopefully more will come. November, I did send two officers to the CIT with the city training, which... come. November, I did send two officers to the CIT with the city training, which they both graduated. We do have a lot of contraband being confiscated in the facility, over 40 pills of fentanyl that was turned over to NEU and suboxone through the mail. And a lot of homemade alcohol and homemade makeshift weapons. We've been finding a lot of. We did transport nine males in the month of November to Central New Mexico Correctional Facilities and four females to Western Women's Correctional Facility in Grants.
Are you being able to utilize the, the new part? Are you?
Not yet.
Still don't have enough staff?
No, my transport, once I get fully staffed on shift, then I would start putting for transport to take the burden off the sheriff's office because they're doing a lot. We are doing a lot of overtime to try to cushion some of what the sheriff's office is putting. Been filling in on our transports. And so I would try to gradually, because you don't want to do too many because then I'll be short on shift. So I've been trying to be cautious because every time you get so many people hired, then all of a sudden someone resigns or something happens. So trying to get that transport filled so that takes that off of the sheriff's office. And then once those positions, even if I get half of those, then we can go from there.
No, you have a new hire?
Yes. I was waiting. I was like, any questions?
I'm excited.
I have my deputy director, Hector Portillo. He has a lot of experience.
Welcome.
And so, and he will help me. So yay.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas, that's for sure. So, yes. So welcome. But I've been working with him since I came back from vacation on the 27th. So I've been kind of teaching him our facility. And I mean, he knows the basis as far as policies and procedures in general, as far as jails and corrections. So just getting him, you know, familiar with our staff, our facilities and how we operate here. So positives, very positive, looking forward.
Good, good. Very glad you're here.
Thank you for coming on board.
That'd be good.
And I'm glad you guys took a vacation.
Yes, me too. It was wonderful. I feel rejuvenated. Thank you.
Good, good.
Any questions?
I don't think I have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on the consent agenda items, we're going to pull number six because Commissioner Burrella is going to recuse herself from voting on that. So do you want to go ahead and do that one first and you and I? Okay, so number six is request approval of resolution number 12 dash seven dash 23 slash one 12 dash 19 for disposition of personal property and fixed assets in accordance with the state statute through govdeals.com and online auction service. Make a motion to approve?
Yep, I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we'll move on to the rest of them. Number one, request approval of accounts payable bills 17B, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Number two, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims for December 2023. Number three, request approval of November 14th, 2023 special meeting minutes. Number four, request approval of November 9th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Number five, request approval of October 31st, 2023 special meeting minutes. Number seven, request approval of resolution number 12 dash seven dash 23 slash one 12 dash 20, 2024 compliance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Number eight, request approval of resolution number 12 dash seven dash 23 slash one 12 dash 21 budget adjustments, December 2023. Number nine, request approval to award RFP 24 dash 006 historical museum management lease contract to Tulosa Basin Historical Society. Number 10, request approval to award RFP 24 007 on-call electrician services to Renshaw Electric and Zuni Electric. This will be a multi-award contract. Number 11, request approval to award RFP 24 008 on-call plumbing services to General Hydronics Plumbing LLC. Number 12, request approval to award RFP 24 dash 009 on-call mechanic slash HVAC services to PC Automated Controls Incorporated. Number 13, request approval of the 2024 commission meeting schedule. Number 14, request approval of 2024 holiday schedule. Number 15, request approval of housing agreement between Otero County and San Juan County for juvenile detainees in the amount of $275 a day. Number 16, request approval to submit annual fund act and services report to NMS Bureau. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we didn't have any unscheduled communication and so we will move on. I don't think we had any.
Any unscheduled.
Okay, good. Okay, so now we'll move on. Commissioner Matherly?
For a short month, it's been kind of a little busy.
Been crazy.
Attended the grazing association meeting. That was, it was pretty productive. There wasn't as many people there as I thought, but we got a lot of discussions in. The three commissioners and I, we all sat in and listened to Pamela Sylvia's project and stuff. Went down to Chaparral to the monthly meeting down there. It was the one with Coquett down there. It was, turned into be a really interesting meeting. Representative Madrid came over and was very responsive to the, the project that we had on Capital Outlay. So he was just wanting any information on that. And then the representative from Heinrich's office that was wanting to try to help us for not so much on the construction, but for the other equipment and stuff for the building, which would help immensely. We went to, Monday morning, went to the meeting with, at the city. There was quite a few people there. There was school board members, the police chief, their attorney, Commissioner Mark Wort and I, some of the new city commissioners. And it was on the truancy and curfew and then trespassing. And it was, it's pretty interesting. I, I kind of wait to see how that's going to work out. It was a little confusing to me on how they could stop you from going into what you pay taxes for. But I understand the, the purpose of it. Went yesterday to a soil and water lunch meeting. It was very interesting. They had a, they had a good report. One of the big deals that I'm always interested in listening to is the, the African roo, the, the spraying and, and the nauseous weed stuff. And the African roo, they've actually sprayed another thousand, was it a thousand acres?
I was in.
Was that what it was?
It's.
So, I mean, they're really trying to stay on top of it. Again, I'm going to ask our beak, because he's on the board with the chamber, if they, if you do meet with the air force or if we need to have a meeting with the air force, we need to try to get them somehow to join in with this little crusade on, because it's, it's overwhelming out there. I talked to Jeff Raven, which his ranch borders two sides of the Harmer. And it's just a path just coming over through their fans. So if, if we're ever going to make any headway on this, we've got to get them on board with us. We went, had the certification of the election results. And other than that, that's, that's about it.
Billy?
Yeah.
I'd like to thank Sylvia for changing the report layout. Thank you very much. It was much easier to read this month for the, the opables. I attended the Fire Department Association meeting, several Zoom meetings, and just multiple other meetings that the, we watched the presentations and stuff like that. And that's about all I have.
You've been towing a lot of vehicles.
Been towing a lot of elk kits.
Okay, since the last meeting, I rode in the Veterans Day parade. That was a, a great day. And Almagordo was a beautiful day and we had a good turnout and it was pretty cool. I attended a meeting in Red Oso with Representative Harlan Benson. He gave us an update on the legislative actions that are going on in this coming up session. Attended the Capital Outlay meeting in Red Oso with Sheriff Black. And that included Otero and Lincoln County. So it was a long day because it had Otero County, I mean, it had everybody. You know, it wasn't just the two counties. It had all the cities involved and stuff too, but it was interesting. Attended the Otero County Advisory Board, Grazing Advisory Board meeting with Commissioner Matherly was there. And I gave him an update on the 30 by 30 and the new BLM conservation plan that, that's been discussed. Attended a meeting at, with the New Mexico Arizona Coalition of Counties with Jim Carlson of the Boundary Line Foundation regarding a plan for addressing the BLM conservation rule. Attended a meeting with the Forest Service at our new ELC building. It was a very nice building. Meeting was very well attended. We had a lot of, lot of people there from different areas, including some of our local loggers. Went to the shooting range because they received their $25,000 check from the Fuller Foundation and the Otero Practical Shooting Association to go towards the construction of the new general purpose space, which was very nice. Attended the meeting for the final out of the county. Attended Chaparral's monthly Zoom meeting regarding the wastewater access gap. Attended the meeting at City Hall that Commissioner Matherly was talking about, about the ordinances. Attended the board meeting for the Tulosa Basin Regional Dispatch Authority and attended the soil and water conservation meeting yesterday also. And I'll be heading to Albuquerque next week for the New Mexico Cattle Growers Annual Meeting. And I'll also have a meeting up there with the New Mexico Arizona Coalition of Counties while I'm at that cattle growers meeting. So be on the road next week.
It does look supposed to snow.
I know, I know. It's going to be cold. And that's all I've got. So Ms. Pamela?
All right, commissioners. It was a busy month, not all of it noteworthy. So we won't give them the dirty details. The Otero County Spain leader education program is up and running. Shelter staff is really excited. They're getting materials dispersed to make the public aware of it. I met with the State Economic Development Department about an invitation that Got Wood LLC out of Tulareosa was invited to apply for $100,000 in LIDA funding. This will reimburse them for land building and infrastructure expenses. Of course, with any LIDA project, they have to go through us. We have to pass an ordinance. We have to be the fiscal agent. So that may be coming towards you in the next few months. We got an extension on our CBBG grant. It was expiring December 10th. We know that that project took forever, partially due to COVID and various issues. It was expiring though so quickly that we didn't have time to get on the meeting. So Commissioner Mark Wort did come in and sign that. We're going to be ratifying that at another meeting. And then we received finally the grant for the sheriff's office vehicles. Again, short notice, didn't have time to bring it to the board. So she was so kind to sign that. We'll be ratifying that one later as well. And that's all I have.
Morning commissioners. Not too much to report this month. A lot of, a lot of things are coming together, but we'll probably have a lot of things on the agenda in the new year as, as all these pieces come together for, for various projects that we've been working on. I said I met with residents and been to address issues and concerns about flooding and roads. I met with residents from the subdivision on scenic Mission Hills, I believe, and, and looked at the situation that they have there. And I'm working for on options that we, if we have any options that we can do to address what's going on there. And we'll follow up with those folks once I have some more information. And went, went to a lot of other meetings. There was the weed, you know, the weed meeting yesterday. Hopeful that it'll help just to have an assessment of what our options are for that building. And came up with some ideas for looking for various sources of funding to maybe address whatever those costs are. Hopefully we can find a way to keep that building because there's a lot of history to it. And then attended some center of commerce meetings. And, you know, there was a, a lot of drama around the parade, but it's on and it'll be happening Saturday at 6:00 PM.
Everybody come out.
Yeah, yeah, everyone come out. And, and we could still use volunteers. So you can still see the parade, but you get to stand in an intersection and keep people from running in the road. So, you know, it's fun for everyone. So we encourage you to volunteer. That's all I got.
Thank you.
RB, I got one question. I, I was at the meeting with the soil and water conservation yesterday. One of the big topics they're talking about is the water reservoirs. The one there in Curtis Canyon, which really kind of, I guess I really didn't realize how much danger that reservoir could be. What kind of liability does the county have if that was to blow or, or the water go over? Because it's going to take miles and miles of people down that bottom out when it does.
Mm-hmm.
Is that our responsibility? Is?
It's not, not our responsibility. The Soil and Water Conservation District is the entity that put it in and it, and it kind of falls under their spear. But in some counties, the district has a taxing authority. And so they have much more funding. The Otero one has never tried to get that taxing authority. And they probably wouldn't be successful because it is, is put to the voters and, you know, the likelihoods of that passing are, are low, which is unfortunate because they do a lot in the county in terms of water conservation and flood control. But I, if, if, if that dam failed, it would be catastrophic and the damage would be immense. So we would be named in the lawsuit that came from that. And I couldn't say to any specificity what our, the extent of our liability would be in there. But, you know, again, the Soil and Water Conservation District doesn't have a lot of funding. And so we would be a target because we, we have our bigger source of money. So, yeah, they, I think they've decided on a course of action that they think they can do to remove those dams. That is still costly, but is the cheapest and best option. And so I think they decided to, to do that. And there's still some liability on them when they do that because they will be changing the course of the water. And if that affects people's property downstream, those people could potentially go after them. But at the same time, everyone that bought property that is downhill or downstream from that did so with the knowledge that they were in a flood plain and flooding is, is a possibility. But without the dam, it'll be more of your normal flooding that everyone gets to experience in the county. If it were to remain in place, it could function another 50 years. But if and when the big storm comes, that's when it would be catastrophic because it would collect all that water and be holding it and then all of a sudden break and far more water than would come through without it is what's going to come down there and take things out. I found some FEMA funding source that is specific to dams. So I sent that to Vicki over at their office to look at. And I'm going to look at it some more too. A bigger scale of flooding in the county. We, Pablo and Matt and Pamela and I have a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers on the 18th. And that is going to be to discuss getting a comprehensive assessment and identification of, of the entire flood situation in the county. We really need that in place before we can start going after the bigger federal funding for, for projects to address that. I reached out to the city because, you know, we talked about that as a joint issue at our joint meeting. And so there are folks that handle that are also going to be at the meeting. And I just spoke with Marjorie before our meeting from the Forest Service and asked if they could join. And I'm going to reach out to the BLM because at least around Almagordo for certain. And I'm going to reach out to the BLM, because at least around Almagordo for certain, some of the land where the water comes through before hitting our subdivisions is Forest Service or BLM land. And everyone needs to be at the table and part of this discussion if we're going to truly address it. So that was kind of a long answer to a very specific question.
It's a good, it's a good to know, though.
Yeah, because I'm just remembering, but there's, there's a house right underneath where you come up Curtis, right to you talk out. There's a house right below that. If they take that out, how are they going to not run through their front door?
I was kind of wondering about that too. I don't know if the house predates the dam or, or not. You know, that's one consideration, but still, I haven't finished reading the reports. There's an executive summary they received, it's a few pages. And then there's a detailed summary that's like 100 pages for each dam. But I think, and I hope they're taking that into account. I wasn't able to make it to their, earlier in their meeting when they were discussing it, because I was at Weed. Tried to get back, but missed it.
I believe your dad said that the dam was there before the house, they built the house there. Whoever owns that property, that's, they built it there.
Okay.
So, I mean, they kind of knew the dam was there.
But now the dam's not going to be there, and so it changes things. So I don't know exactly what the, when they take the dam out, you know, will that involve kind of leaving it kind of a berm around that house, or what that will entail? I don't know. There's a lot of dirt that's going to have to come out of there, and it's got to go somewhere, I don't know.
I attended one of their meetings where they had a lady come down from Albuquerque do a presentation on funding that they were applying for. And it was the plan for the rebuild of the dams. And part of the phases was trying to get the Forest Department to give permission to clean up all the silting and all of the, the trees that have been grown.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought from that meeting that there was going to be a rebuild of the dams. And has that changed?
That changed, that was the original intent. They did get that permission from the Forest Service, I believe. It took about five years, but they finally got it, and they did some clean out last year, last summer. And the intent originally was to rebuild them, but they, they got these reports this month or last month, finally from the State Engineers Office, the dam inspector, expert on dams. And so he provided these assessments, and, you know, it was like 700,000 to remove one of the dams and like 3 million to rebuild it. And so then they were trying to weigh whether it was better to rebuild it. And it's going to be challenging and expensive to get it to the standards where they get a rating where, yes, it's a safe dam, there's no risk it's going to break. And so the simpler and cheaper option is to remove it.
And I keep on questioning about the lodging tax?
So I will pose the question, do you, you want the commissioners agree that they would like to direct me to put, start the process and get that on the next, on the meetings in the next month or two to implement a lodger's tax? Or do you want to make the lodger's tax a topic of discussion for the January meeting? And based on that discussion, decide whether you want to engage in the process to implement one?
Yeah, we'd like to have the open discussion, so we can decide if we want to pursue that. And then also, I thought we might be up against a deadline, that we had to get something done before January 1st. That's why I've been kind of pushing you.
Well, at least for the GRT deadline, I would presume it would be similar for this one. It's, that deadline to get it, to have the tax start in January is like September.
Okay.
And July, to do it in July, I got to check and see what that date is.
Okay.
But if that is the intent, or, you know, implementing it as soon as possible would likely be the preferred course of action. So if those dates apply, I will have a back, a back plan for how that would need to occur in the next few months to, to make the July deadline.
Anything else?
I just have a small little presentation.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay? If I can get Sylvia and Pam to come up front. Some of you may not know that we've had Sylvia and Pam working on their projects, which benefit our county huge. I'm so proud of you, I'm going to cry. We loved your presentation, and we thank you for doing everything that you did. Thank you. Anyway.
I didn't think you were crying.
I know.
I already know.
Fall back. I know. Thank you.
You think you're softy.
You guys, thank you. We appreciate you guys very much and your support, that's for sure.
Guys worked hard, you deserve it. No more crying? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.